Need a straw and some spitwats, Jim?
My grandson comes in and that's what he did. And then he tells me he got sore throat. I'm like, slap it though. What's wrong?
That's inflammation, dude.
Oh, it didn't? I'll tell you how to do it. Take the pipe and get it out. Or maybe even leave it in. And go over the top into the water like you're sappinging out of a tank. And sapping it over the top so that it gives, breaks that back. See if that'll work.
And your water flow down the aisle?
Probably go out there and it's up you. Jim, it just looks like it's down. Okay. Our clock is messed up again. Okay, it's time to begin our meeting this morning. And so we'll start with a prayer and a prayer.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you today. Lord, we just ask you to be with us, Lord. As we do county business, Lord, we just ask you to be with those that couldn't make it today. Lord, we just ask you to heal them so that you can just make.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am Texas five. I pledge allegiance to the United States, my state, under God, one with many, indivisible.
Anyone sign a form to be able to speak for the town? Nobody? Okay. All right, old business. Courts discuss, not and consider inter precinct projects scheduled and staffing. We got a bridge wiped out. We did have a workaround, so we're working on that up precinct one. Those bridges that you guys helped us with are halfway washed out again. But they're, they're something that we can get done in, in the future while we're working on this other one. And how's y'all's precincts go?
You want a wind farm?
I don't even want to sell a farm.
We made an agreement, parents. Any clean to you for playground?
Yes.
Playground walkout, playground flash yesterday.
I'm assuming with tracks.
Isn't it recording?
Oh, my goodness. So that's what you're talking about is, oh, my goodness.
And this is over?
Yes, you've got this thing to do, don't you?
Oh, I've already missed it.
We're gonna do it again. Well, that's, I guess that's progress.
Yep.
You notice one of the propositions was to actually build power plants. Run them down. Yeah, here we go. Anyone else? You guys just now?
So good a road washed out.
Okay, well, I'll take the ring. It is hard to get them all put back together, but we'll get there. Okay, new business. We're going to conduct a public hearing to make corrections to a county roadmap. So we'll give two or three minutes on that if anyone wants to speak to that. Can't remember where they're, aren't they named roads?
Yeah, they're named roads.
I know where they're at.
Yeah. And that's really strange because they're Tuscaloosa or Arkansas.
I think there's a new valley on it, which is same as the other side too.
Yeah. Okay, so maybe whoever named the roads are intending for, you don't all the way across on these things.
Do you use a Tuscaloosa?
It's alphabetical.
I can't remember if you would have key charter back there. I don't know if that's key. They're growing or I can't remember what it is.
Ah, can't. Okay, that ought to be time on that. So we close the public hearing. And then we're going to consider making corrections on the county roadmap. So.
Is that a motion? I make a motion, we can put them back on the map.
For those that are at Key, okay, cross from the airport. Okay.
If you would give me the exact name so I can put them in there.
I got them all listed.
Okay.
Okay, so motion in second. All in favor, raise your hand. That's what we're hearing. We got roads on the map. Okay, courts present the retirement plaque to Dr. Bead Cooper who has served for a very long time for our health unit. And we so appreciate that. And so you'll come up, we'll present this to you. Someone take a picture for us. Would you send the chair, chair in the middle place? We don't want to keep a doctor waiting to go back to see his patients. So we're going to get this done. Well, congratulations. He's been here and done a very good job for a very long time, even as chief of staff for a time.
Off and on.
Yeah.
How long you been, how long you been doing all that?
Uh, started in eighty-two. Wow, that's great. And finished up on October first. Okay, well, that's all right. Come on over, I'm gonna let you set by.
Don't touch me.
Okay, I'll try. Okay. I'm wonderful. Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Thank you so much for your service. Do you want to sign?
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you. We also have a gentleman in here that is busy. So we're going to go down to where you at here? Okay, item J. Courts discussing consider going out for bids to sell a Ford High Top van ambulance.
Yeah, so we've been kind of, I've been kicking, I've been kicking around, ready to do with this truck. With our new truck being delivered this week. It was a two and a half year old wait, but we finally got it and it's been serviced. I think we're ready to move on to the next phase of our ambulance fleet. And that's to, with court's approval, do out for bids for a twenty eighteen Ford Transit ambulance. So we can go ahead and sell that. And if there's no, no bids for that or within our approval, then we could probably, I think, sell it out right at that point.
Yeah. Give bids first, the truck, will you?
That's my request.
I'll make the motion when you allow Jason Towers' two thousand eighteen Ford van ambulance.
Okay, got a second in the motion. If anybody's far, raise your hand, please. We need to put a date on when that closes. Or when you want to open the bid? Open the bid? Open the bid?
So that's.
Immediately, is that how that works?
Immediately. You have to run it two weeks? No, no.
Right, okay. Been a while.
Yeah, yeah, it's two weeks.
Yeah, okay.
You mind us to place the bid paperwork on the website or have somebody put it on the website? It has to go in the newspaper.
You got that, Jim?
Send it to classifieds.
You might even send out some notices and you've probably done it before to some of these smaller counties that have ambulance services. That might, could utilize that van and may, maybe get a better bid. Yeah, didn't, yeah, I might give it away this year. Yeah, okay. All right.
There's a decent plan.
Yes, sir.
A smaller.
Just smaller, decent, man. All right, let's go back to E. Courts discussing consider the grant for routine airport maintenance program for Snyder Winston's older.
This is, I guess, say who didn't come. This is just a renewal, but this year, normally in the past, it's only been up to fifty thousand for the year. And they've increased it to two hundred thousand for this next year. So, and it's in, it used to be an eighty-twenty, now it says ninety percent of them. Or it was a fifty-fifty actually before. They would reimburse us fifty percent of our cost in our M and R maintenance and repair lines. But now we get up to a hundred thousand instead of fifty thousand. So it has gone up quite a bit.
So it's a ninety-eight year old bid?
Yes.
Okay. Longs are not fit.
Longs are what?
Not fit.
Yes, well, all grants are, lots of them.
I'm like, motion, we approve the grant for routine airport maintenance.
And also permission for Dan to sign.
I'm getting permission with Jim to sign.
Okay, say. So we've got motion in second. All in favor, raise your hand. Carries unanimously. Okay, courts consider the emergency medical dispatch system and upgrade agreement contract.
Yep.
I think precinct already left. I believe this is that new system that they, that the court approved for them to pay out of EMS Texas tax funds. But the sheriff went to the sheriff's and they're going to get half of that back from the cog. So I believe this is the actual agreement or the software of it to get that implemented. That y'all could already be a pretty big board that they could produce.
This is the AppCo and Telecom?
Um, yes. Yes.
What's your pleasure, guests?
I make a motion, we approve the emergency medical dispatch system and upgrade agreement contract.
Allow the test to sign it after the county attorney views the contract. Okay. All right, we got motion in second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries unanimously. G, courts discussing consider the sale of a cat loader for precinct one. So I've got a man that has offered a hundred and eighty thousand for a two thousand eight cat loader. So what do y'all think?
Make a motion, you say what?
So we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we're going to skip H since the judge isn't here and I know nothing about this. And he said if we just take no action on that one until next court meeting?
Court.
Yes. No action. Okay. I, court to consider resolution to elect members to the appraisal district board of directors. Anyone have, we're going to nominate there.
I talked to you today and he just said it. Both loaded, but we're not even considering it. We got to reconsider with you because we have two at all.
Yes.
Clarence Spiker was the last one. And that's the one deal. And I talked to Jackie and it can be anybody from anywhere. I thought it was pretty simple. But when we find somebody, I'll find somebody. I'll call Jackie Taylor, but we have four listed. I make a motion here. The votes have been sent there, split our votes up because we have more votes than anybody. Yes, this is it.
So we're just signing a reg, just agreeing upon a resolution?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
To elect the board of directors?
Yes.
Do we not need to come back with someone and?
Yes, we actively send the fifth thing.
So we can just do no action on this one until we get it further along? Or do you want to?
I think we all go ahead and approve.
And approve the, okay. All right.
But it's Jerry Boyd, Ryan Gray, Tommy Anderson, all part team.
Okay.
And votes from us are split up because we have thirteen hundred nine point four seven.
Sitting at like two hundred seventy-eight point four eight.
I make a motion, we approve candidates for the appraisal district board of directors as presented. We have one vacant seat that will be made later.
Okay. All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Okay, courts discussing consider certification of additional revenues in the form of funds in excess of budgeted revenue.
Um, just before the golf course concession stand, um, they have already gone over the amount that we budgeted by six thousand four hundred and ten dollars. So this is certifying that revenue. And then there will be a budget amendment presented for five thousand to place it into the expense line so she can replenish her spot.
What are you paying them?
Anything they'll buy. I like to keep them thirsty and hungry.
I make a motion, we approve the certification of additional revenues in the form of excess provision of funds for the scurry Kellyville.
Okay. All right, we got a motion in a second. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Question unanimous then. Courts discussing consider certification of additional revenues in the form of supplement payment from PAC or NBD supplemental.
This is on the juvenile probation, uh, twenty twenty GMC Terrain. It was in another wreck and it wasn't our person's fault. It was somebody ran a stop sign and keep on them, but it totaled their car. They had nothing but bad luck with that car since they got it. So our insurance paid the claim, but they're going, they're fine. The claim was there with all state, the other people's insurance to get it. So it's twenty-five thousand seven eighty-seven fifty that we got back right now on that total.
Hold it was totaled and it's going to the junkyard.
Yeah.
It's sitting in the, at the annex for the bullpen waiting for them to come pick it up.
Okay.
Oh, somebody needs to look at my, my, my current card.
I did, I told Si, I was like, he waited forever to be able to get any vehicle for the juvenile probation. And then that one, he, it's been in the, it led to Wentzmore, or, I think he, I forget the other ones that he took it to. It's been in all the places a bunch of times already.
It's been wrecked two, three times.
It's been wrecked at least twice and then it had hell damage as well, so it's, it's been a while. And none of the wrecks were their fault, it was other people.
But in the tank.
You would think that people see juvenile probation on the side of it, they might be a little bit.
You would.
That might be.
So it's called a juvenile.
I'm like, motion, we agree.
I've got bad memories.
The certification of additional revenues for payment from PAC or juvenile probation.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand, unanimous. All right. Courts consider approval of the line on transfers.
Let me get my originals for my.
Now start signing.
Well, no, I wouldn't show you. Some of them, y'all said the law judge decided, so I wouldn't.
You didn't get any?
Any of these need to be you were signing or wait for the judge?
Wait and let him sign anything that got his name on it.
I get a copy of my signature whenever.
Anything you can wait on, let him sign.
Okay, I'll let, let go for him.
Okay, so starting with the line on transfers, first one is county judge office. Uh, four hundred into education and training, two hundred into office supplies, which is six hundred out of part-time. Um, the next one is JP one, education and training, seven hundred dollars out of late journals to acquire training. The next one is the sheriff's office, seven hundred and fifty into auto expense, six thousand in capital outlay. And it's sixty-seven fifty out of utilities to replace the hot water heater and for seeing auto repairs. Then park, general payroll, uh, entry general payroll, eighteen thousand three sixty fifty out of part-time, nine thousand seven thirty-nine. And out of seventy-four calories, eight thousand six twenty-three to be this, so that they could go ahead and start training Lynn to replace Melissa while Melissa was still there. And the next one's park, other equipment, thirty-nine ninety-three sixty, park and tire, park tires, one thousand, ground to place one thousand for five thousand nine ninety-three sixty out of equipment, a thousand to five thousand, thirty, thirty-nine ninety-nine three sixty of park. Maintenance repairs, two thousand. Um, precinct two, maintenance and repairs, seventeen thousand out of precinct payroll and part-time. Precinct three, uh, cars and tubes, five thousand out of road material and construction. Those are all the line on transfers. So I'm going to do budget amendment. Budget amendment, uh, precinct, I mean JP one autopsy expense fifteen thousand. They had multiple back-to-back autopsies and, uh, that's, and that's listing, you can't tell how many people are gonna, you're going to have to do that for. And then this is JP two, the same thing, autopsy expense fifteen thousand, they're both out of funds in that line. Try, uh, tax office postage, three thousand two twenty-seven, this is a postage increase. This is the budget amendment for the funds we certified for the probation, juvenile probation, capital outlay, five thousand plus. It's twenty-five thousand seven eighty-seven fifty is for that new vehicle, or to go to purchase a new vehicle. Precinct two, road materials and construction, fifty thousand of the reimbursement fans, funds from Techsite Grant off the road repairs. Um, county and Mr. Court Tech Fund, equipment, one thousand to five thousand, this is sixteen thirty-nine ninety-six. And the county attorney had to purchase a computer used for viewing the videos from the body cam from the police department. They will be only holding them for a limited time and the cases won't have been filed by then. So in order for them to be able to have access to the body cam videos, by the time that court cases come, they need a, a computer special that is specifically set up for that. And to store those, that data on. And then this is golf course for the certified revenue earlier, from earlier. This is golf course concession line, five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell, third. I make a motion, we approve the line on, line on transfer. It's budget amendment.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Everybody, let's start, raise your right hand. Everybody that's far, raise your hand. Okay, court to consider approval of the count's bill.
Count's favorable, it has been three weeks since we had court, so it is two million nineteen thousand seven ninety-seven sixty-four.
Okay, good motion in second, everybody in favor. Okay. Before we go into executive session, we have a letter by Joey Harrington about the golf course and since it's in your care, I'll let you read it.
Yeah, go ahead, let's see everybody that's on it, text one.
Says, congratulations on hosting your inaugural first degree event during County Golf Course. This recognition is reflected to your hard work and sacrifices that reflect values. Makes West Texas such a special piece of real work and very fulfilling. Thank you for your contributions, contributions to the nineteenth congressional district of Texas for setting an example for all to follow. Signed, Joey Harrington.
Cool, boss. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And he supported.
It was pretty impressive, the like I told y'all before, it was, uh, we were the first ones in the state of Texas to do this. And the kids got a lot out of it, and they really enjoyed it, and it's a, it's a boost to the county, really. It's recognition for the county itself that we had the, we've all to do something like that, and I.
Yes.
It was.
Okay, we have two different things we're going to talk about in executive session. Court to convene in the executive session, persons of personnel matters, section five five one point zero seven four of the Texas government code. Health department director, and B, court to convene in the executive session, persons of personnel matters, section five five five, five five one point zero seven one of the Texas government code. Consultation with Tony on the following issue pending litigation as it relates to Ken and Morgan lawsuits.
Okay, I'll give you a call tomorrow and see if any actually.
Thank you.
Thank you.